So we're up to section three, which is the elementary program update. This is Bolden.
Yeah, I'll just, this, yeah, you can tap it. New programs report. Okay, so I just kind of use this opportunity to create a very brief presentation about everything kind of new to Oakland Public School this year. So the first thing that we are implementing this year is a new master schedule. And as you can see up there, I listed everything that is included in the master's schedule that is scheduled daily, meaning it is in there. It's blocked out for every single teacher K through five so that we can make sure it gets done. And we were able to spread our support out equally by the way we arranged the schedule. Again, we did have the PLC programs report last month, I believe, and the teachers are very excited to have that 40 minutes built into their schedule every morning in addition to universal intervention time for ELA and math. And we have SEL health time built in daily, read aloud, recess, the state mandates 20 minutes. We do a full 30 minutes of recess. By the time they walk outside and walk back in, they get their full 20 minutes of state mandated recess. Our math, Reader's Workshop, Writer's Workshop, Science, Social Studies, and Enrichments are all 40-minute periods. So all of that is structured and built into the new master schedule this year. Next. And we have our new learning acceleration teachers, K to five. So with these learning acceleration teachers, we have one at each grade level. We can provide small group support for 40 minutes of reading daily, intervention support for 30 minutes of phonics daily, intervention support for 20 minutes of math, small group support for 20 minutes of math, and then small group support for 80 minutes of writing weekly. We're excited about our new band and choir program. So we have Ms. Palero, who we hired over the summer. She's been fantastic. Currently, we have 47 students in grades four and five participating in our band program. That's 64% of our fourth and fifth grade population. They're doing small group instrumental lessons. They have whole group band practices and then band performances. We also currently have 25 students in grades three through five who went out for our choir program. They practice as a whole group, and we have choir performances. So we're excited to announce that our first holiday band and choir concert is scheduled for the 22nd of December. So our new math program this year is called Into Math for all kindergarten through fifth grade students. And I'll just briefly go over what this program does for us. First, we did purchase all of the instructional materials in print and digital form so the teachers can kind of pick and choose what works best. It includes assessments in the program that teachers can easily monitor student growth. It actually prints out these quality growth data reports that the teachers can use to pinpoint exactly where the students are proficient and where they might need some extra help. And it helps us incorporate targeted differentiated strategies for every lesson in either print, digital interactivities, and through the use of their tabletop flip charts, which is all part of the differentiation and manipulative kits that we also purchased with the program. So it just helps the teachers provide the right support for those students. And it focuses on meeting the needs of the whole child. So there's also a component that focuses on growth mindset, growth mindset and SEL, which is pretty cool. In addition, it allows students to monitor their own growth because they log on to their WAGgle. And through that connected teaching platform, they can actually see what they're getting right, what they're getting wrong. They get a little praise every time something's correct. So actually, they could see how well they're doing and what levels they're reaching on their own. And it encompasses whole group, small group, and partner work. That encourages collaboration. And again, through the differentiation kits and the manipulative kits that we order, the teachers have all of the materials to be able to do so. So we definitely got the whole package. It uses formative checks and provides recommendations for intervention, which is awesome. So if we see that there's a child that's struggling, the program actually gives us the materials and the lessons that we need to work with those students, whether they're children who need some extra support or children who are excelling. So it also challenges our higher level learners. And lastly, it offers embedded on-demand program training for teachers and administrators. We've already taken advantage of one of those training sessions, and there's more to come this year. We also purchased a new ELA universal screener for K to five as a part of our multi-tiered systems of support program this year. It's been very hard to pinpoint and identify exactly where students struggle when they're struggling to learn how to read. So we're hoping that this program helps our teachers identify those areas in a much easier way. So this assessment is online, but it's not online for the student, which is awesome. So it is a benchmark assessment, and it's progress monitoring. So all students take the benchmark assessment. They're actually reading off a piece of paper, and they're doing their work in front of the teacher, and the teacher's logging the results on the computer. So then, as soon as that student has done that assessment, boom, the results are right there in front of them. What it does for the whole class is it will level them, high, middle, low. And then, of course, the students that are in the low tier will get that more intense intervention support through the MTSS program, and we'll be able to progress monitor those students and the individual progress that they're making throughout the year. So those students will be assessed more frequently because they're in the intervention support program. So again, it does not just tell the teacher, hey, here's the kid you have to work with. It goes a step further. It'll tell you class-wide, if five students are struggling in phonemic awareness, you can pull a group and here's a lesson, and here's the materials you need to do the lessons with those students to strengthen their phonemic awareness. Or, hey, these four students are struggling with their vocabulary. So it actually pinpoints exactly what students, the names of the students that are struggling, puts them in the groups already for you, and then it provides the lessons and all the materials the teachers need. So it's like a one-stop shop, and we're really just trying to make things easier for the teachers so that they can really provide each child with that individualized support they need throughout the school year. And then, what's new in preschool? Well, Mrs. Holloway is new to preschool, also pre-K three.
So I apologize, but I didn't know we were first up. What's new in preschool? Cause at Oak preschool, I got them, they're joining, they joined the Open PTA. They're really excited about that. They love being a part of the activities that the Open PTA is doing and have been very, other parents have been involved, involved with that a lot. They kind of didn't have anywhere to belong with the, with the PTA, so it worked out really well there. We have had some parent involvement activities, bringing parents into the building, which is, you know, one of the requirements of the preschool grant. And the teachers are welcoming that, that in the classroom, the kids are loving it. It's really a nice connection. It also informs the parents kind of information about the curriculum, how the creative curriculum works. And they kind of can understand, you know, when their little guys come home and talk about their day at preschool. We have, yes, PD, we're working on PD focusing on some literacy, early literacy skills. A little bit after the holidays, we're still, you know, getting into some, some schedules with, you know, three and four-year-olds. And so we're going to be focusing a little bit on that a little bit later in the school year. And there is preschool, visible learning, I'm sorry, for the early childhood, that the teachers will also be getting PD on. We've gotten books on them and started those conversations in little, like, PLC groups just amongst, amongst us. And as well as the, which I don't think is up there, but that's okay, the two preschools, Collingswood and Oakland are doing some PLCs together, building base as well, and they're really enjoying that time together.
So I actually had a question. When you mentioned the enrichments, art, gym, music, do they change per marking period? Is it weekly, daily?
They have, all of them weekly except STEM. So the STEM program is one full marking period weekly for every student, but everything else is weekly. So they get their art, music, gym. They actually get gym twice a week.
Okay. Committee of the whole, is there a motion to win the committee of the whole?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, we're now on the committee of the whole. Anybody have anything they'd like to discuss with the board as a whole?
Just wanted to thank everybody for taking the time to look through some of the information from school boards during our committee meetings. Just a quick update on my end. I've been doing a little bit of research since then on, you know, pulling together some core beliefs and some language for us to look at. So I'm working on that, and we'll share once I kind of put that together. I did, I'll also take the opportunity to look at the school board's website to see what resources are out there. Mostly seemed to be links to webinars and different, you know, things like that. It wasn't necessarily any specific links to language or anything like that that would be included. So just wanted to share a little update, and then, you know, if anybody else had thoughts after looking through any of the notes or anything, if you had the opportunity to.
Anyone else? You guys are all missing the, our council meeting tonight. Happens to be the same night as us, which is probably affecting our, our crowd, I'm sure. Okay, is there a motion to come out of the committee of the whole? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, we're back in the regular session. Future dates are there for your perusal. There's a ton of them, as there usually is at this time of year. You can read them. If you have any questions on anything, let us know, or let the appropriate party know. PTA's got a lot of stuff on there. OMASAC has some stuff on there as well. Okay, section six, approval of minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes from the October 18th meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved and second. Are there any questions or corrections on the minutes? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Okay, so moved. The no unfinished business at this point. Public comment, there is no public, so I guess we can skip that for a moment unless one of you guys have anything. Okay, and we'll go to the superintendent's report.
So section eight point zero one is the attached enrollment report. October of 2021 was 257. As of October 2022, it's 280. The school safety drill report is attached eight point zero two. And eight point zero four is the anti-bullying report, which is also attached. And eight point zero five is the child study team report, which is also included for your review.
Okay. Thanks, Fred. Any questions on any of those items? Okay, moving right along to section nine. At the end, you're up.
Okay, this evening, I have an item nine point zero one is your October 2022 monthly transfer report. Nine point zero two is your board secretary treasures report and cash report. Nine point zero three is the listing of the warrants to be paid tomorrow morning on your behalf. And nine point zero four is a listing of all the purchase orders that have been issued for the month of November. That's fine.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. We'll move on to section 10, finance, buildings and grounds. Todd Schaefer, you're up.
All right, so items 10.01 through 10.06 were just presented by Ms. Coleman for our approval this evening. Item 10.07 is the ESEA consolidated grant amendment to amend the 2022-2023 ESA, ESEA consolidated grant to bring the carryover funds from the prior school year, as listed there in the chart for you. Item 10.08, we're looking to amend the Oakland Public School 403B retirement plan to include hardship withdrawals in accordance with the new safe harbor financial need provision. Item 10.09, we are seeking approval for our tuition contract with Collingwood Public School District for middle school educational services for Oakland pupils in grades six through eight for the years 2023 to 2028. Total tuition each year for the term of this agreement shall be 1.481 million and change. Item 10.10 is a use of facilities request for OMASAC Gym Night to use the gym on the following dates that are listed there for you from 7:30 to 9:00 PM. Item 10.11 is another use of facilities request for the surge independent color guard to use for the dates and time that are listed for you there. So we're seeking approval on items 10.01 through 10.11.
Okay, Todd, I might have, I guess they all, it's all under 10.07, never mind, never mind. Okay, is there a motion to approve items 10.01 through 10.11?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved and second. Are there any questions on any of those items?
I have a correction on 10.11. The group had requested the gym for those dates. It says cafeteria in the agenda.
And, and I was going to ask about that. I thought maybe they were using the cafeteria, but they, they want to.
Healthy kids, isn't in the cafeteria gym. Yeah.
So it should be gym? Okay.
And then, um, just one more comment. I don't know, I kind of forgot about this for the committee of the whole, but should we discuss the, or I guess is everyone aware of the change to 10.09 in that it's different than the contract we had previously in that this is only for middle school? So the current contract includes ninth grade in the contract? So this contract, ninth grade will be paid the high school tuition rate, and this contract is for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students for a flat rate for that annual amount. That's all. Thanks.
For the high school rate, that'll be annually as well. So this, the middle school, that's a five-year period, but the high school is annually.
I'm sorry, what did, I couldn't hear what you said.
Of the, for the high school tuition rates, that'll be recalculated annually?
Yeah.
Right?
Yes.
But for middle school, it'll be a five-year.
Yeah, just, again, just to be aware of that, the, the existing contract is a million five something, including four grades. Now it's going to be three grades for a million four eighty-six or eighty-one. So when you put the, the 10th grade tuition on, it's going to be a significant increase, but just so you're aware of that. Okay, any other questions? On a roll call.
Mrs. Valpelle?
Yes.
Mrs. Butchko?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mrs. Ezekiel?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Okay, section 11, curriculum and personnel. Mrs. Riley, who is not here, there are no field trips. Three-year preschool plan. Is there anything in there that you need to point out to us? Okay. Do we have a waiting list this year? So, so we may not hit the 60 kids. Okay, now who's they, the state grant? Okay, but this year we had 48, and we filled 48. Okay, and next year, we're going to fill 60, although, well, yeah.
Okay. The state's funding four classrooms, and they're assuming 15 kids in a classroom. So it's basically, the funding is going to be consistent with what Jen's already, what you're currently getting, or just not all our seats are filled. That makes sense.
Yeah, I'm kind of disappointed that we can't max out the kids. On the bright side, we can service everybody that wants to be serviced. Okay, substitutes and teachers, there were none travel expense. There was one item on there, and that was it. So is there a motion to approve items 11.02 through 11.04?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions on any of those items? On a roll call.
Mrs. Valpelle?
Yes.
Mrs. Butchko?
Yes.
Mr. McMillan?
Yes.
Mr. Tabey?
Yes.
Mrs. Ezekiel?
Yes.
Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Mr. Stotts?
Yes.
Okay, section 12, school community relations and policy. Denise?
I'm going to start with the PTA report. The PTA met here in the library on November 1st. They have hosted a couple dine-in donates since our last board meeting, one at Pepperoni Pizza, one at the Pop Shop just yesterday. They also hosted a pretzel sale, which was very successful. So I think they sold close to 600 pretzels, which is, that's a lot. Yeah. Yeah, it was over 500, but it was a lot. PTA also hosted classroom parties on October 31st that the room ambassadors hosted, so each classroom had a party that day. Coming up, PTA is hoping a family fun night on Friday, November 18th. They're going to have Zumba. So there's two different times, one at 6:30 for younger students, one at 7:30 for older students. That'll be held in the cafeteria. And our next meeting is Tuesday, December 6th at 6:30 here in the library. Oh, just an announcement to you, I just saw today that PTA was trying to participate in the Collingswood Holiday Parade, which happens on Saturday after Thanksgiving, but I don't think they got enough interest for that. So PTA is not participating in that as a group, but everyone's still encouraged to go because it's fun. That's it.
Okay, that, that reminds me, too, I meant to ask Jen, when, when you were giving your presentation about our music program, the borough with their gala tree lighting, they, our, our kids have participated periodically up there anyway. Are they planning on doing that? Yeah, we probably should ask and give us the exposure. Okay. Okay.
Did you miss, I think there was a fundraiser at the Forehouse?
Oh, yes, there was, yes. I'm sorry, there was.
I went to that.
Yeah. I forgot, you know what, I might have messed up. I'm sorry. I might have said the Pepperoni Pizza, I might have gotten the dates mixed up. Yes, there was one at the Forehouse, too. Thank you. So next is the OMASAC report. So Therese couldn't be here tonight, so she sent me the update. So OMASAC hosted the first gym night of the year on November 4th, which was very successful. Fifty-five students attended, so continues to be really strong turnout for gym nights here. So again, that is for fourth grades and up. So we usually get a good number of middle school students that come here for that. It's a nice event. OMASAC is waiting to determine how funds for training and assemblies and red ribbon can be spent in line with anti-drug and alcohol education, but are sensitive to the school's need to couch the issues in less drug terms. And they're waiting to hear from the police department on DARE programming. So that is the OMASAC update. 12.03 is Collingswood. Really want to give us an update on Collingswood.
Okay, Collingswood, October 24th meeting. They had presentations on a whole raft of things. It was exciting. They had a young lady, Anna Ratch, Rach? Rach from Haddon Heights, who was trying for her Girl Scout Gold Award, which is the same as a Boy Scouts Eagle Award. So she made a very nice presentation of that. There were presentations on SSDS district test, test reports, and the gifted and talented program. The committee of the whole discussion centered on school safety. One parent disgusted, disgusted. Must be a Freudian slip, I don't know. One parent discussed the gifted and talented program in the public comment section. Student reps gave reports. They accepted the donation of a trumpet to the music program. They approved shared service agreements with Causeborough and Clementon. They approved contracts for speech therapy evaluations and CST training. They approved a comprehensive maintenance plan. They approved leasing the former St. John's School for office space at the moment at the price of $71,000 a year. They approved field trips. They approved a counseling plan. They approved a number of resignations and appointments. They appointed the PLC leader. PLC is the start of the school day for teachers. Is that correct? Do I have that right? Okay, that's the start of the school day?
Not in Collingswood.
Oh, not in Collingswood? Oh. Okay. Can't trust me with anything, you know? I'll tell you. They approved raising the bus driver's pay to $28 an hour. That's, I understand bus drivers are getting $35 an hour, some of the private companies, so I'm not sure how effective that's going to be, but it's got to be better than what they have right now. And they approved a nursing service plan and orders for treatment and emergencies. And that was it.
I have a question. Sure. Did you, the, the field trips that were approved, what, eight trips were they? Do you know?
Well, I'm sorry, which, which one was that?
The field trips, you said that they approved a few field trips? I didn't know if that was for any elementary schools over there, or was that only for higher ed? Field trips? Yeah.
When, is it contracts that were approved?
No, the kids' field trips.
The kids' what?
Field trips.
Oh, field trips?
Yeah, yeah.
It's, it's, it would be everybody, it would be both elementary and secondary, so it's the whole gamut. I only get the vote on the ones for middle school and high school, though.
Just wondering, I know, I think some of the teachers have field trips planned for like later on in the summer. I just didn't know if like, if they were ahead of the game of, you know, and like, if, if we were not, if we were missing out on some field trip action in Oakland, that's all.
Oh, I, I honestly, I wasn't looking at that. I'll, I'll pay more attention and, and see what they're doing over there.
So I, you want me to, you want me to answer?
Yes.
Okay. So one school is going to a farm in Medford. Three of the schools are just going to Haddon Avenue, walking to Haddon Avenue at the old, the old Zane North Building. And the middle school is, another school is going to the middle school for a preview of the middle school play. So with the exception of one, one school, everybody's doing like local walk, walking, walking field trips.
Great. All right, 12.04 is update on Oakland Education Foundation.
So I spoke with Kim Love last Thursday and tonight. So I didn't make the meeting. I think Therese made the meeting last time. But she said that the candy cells were wrapping up. I think they wrapped up on Monday.
Yes.
She spoke with Ms. Bolden last week about school needs, perimeters, and support awards and the application process for those. And she was thinking that on December 1st, 7 o'clock, we'll have a meeting discussing some of the fundraising initiatives like the Winter Ball, continued candy cell.